Call me in order, prepare for pleasure allegiance. My pleasure allegiance put back from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Here.
Trustee Carter?
Here.
Trustee Todd?
Here.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
I'll accept the motion to go into recess, to go into executive session.
So...
Move by trustee Grant, second by trustee Tate.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Yes. Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll accept the motion to reconvene. Move by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Tate.
Trustee Brewer?
Here.
Trustee Carter?
Here.
Trustee Grant?
Here.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Here.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion. Item number four, approval of minutes. I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes for proceeding in the committee meeting dated November 7th, 2017.
So...
Second.
It was moved by... Moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Grant.
Brewer? Then ask for questions, comments.
I just want to make a comment. Back in November of 2017, we indicated that we're going to have some security features in Plexiglas for front counter. I just want to know that. I don't think we ever did that. I just want to know and find out who we should talk to about getting that security in Plexiglas.
Mike?
Okay.
That is, if you will, your honor?
Sure.
That would fall under unfinished business, not the business of accepting the minutes.
But I would, I just want to make the note.
You have a question? May I put your call roll?
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes for the board meeting dated January 9th, 2018.
So... Second.
Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Todd. Any other questions? May I put...
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Item number five, public comment. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on that pertaining to the business of Saw Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate. How replies will be followed and may not be personal in nature. Please state your name.
My name is Jackie Glaze. I just have to make a comment. Last Wednesday I got up, I had the water. Several of us didn't. They were fixing a bike on Strasburg. This was a planned fix. They had Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday to notify all of us. It has been done in the past, it should be done in the future. They had plenty of time, and it was very inconvenient for a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Yonkis. One of the things I wanted to say was that I want to give accolades to Linda Washington for the bookbag giveaway. I hope this is not over, but she made sure somehow that each one of those children knocked out of there with the bookbag, with the book supplies. And I just think that was fantastic, and the parents and the children were both very happy about that. And, well, again, I want to publicly say thank you to her and just simply express my appreciation. Now, I'm going to ask you some questions about the accounts payable, if I may. I have great concerns about the amounts that are being paid by the Strada. I don't understand. On August 7th, she was paid over $1,400 instead. In addition, she was paid $150 along with that. That was just for one sale. I cannot understand that. So, if you could give me some clarity. When I add everything up, what it amounts to is like it's, she's just giving a payment of over $6,000 in two weeks. I, can you just, I need some, some, just understanding how a person can make that kind of money? And also how we can afford to pay them.
I have a question about, what, what are, this is on page two. The, it says classified listings of treasurer's report. And it lists over $800 being changed for that. I'd like to know what that is.
Oh, at one page, page three, I noticed that $116 was paid for bottled water, and I'm not trying to be funny or anything, but bottled water is safe to drink. I'm just kind of curious why $116 was being paid for bottled water. So, give me a second.
The pay for Dr. Stroud, she does two different things, so that's why you saw she submits, she submits the invoices every week, and she does do negotiations and also human resources. So, that's why you, I don't know where you get $5,000 or $4,000 two weeks ago.
We're not able to get it.
Anyway, I don't know where that comes from, but there's two different things that she, two different services that she performs, so that's what that is. On page two, in regards to the listing, that's something that we have to inform the, it goes to the paper for. The treasurer's report, every now and then, goes out to the paper, so that's what they charge to disseminate that information. And bottled water, that's the police department, and I don't know if it's for the prisoners, but they do have bottled water services over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Couch. One of the questions I have is regarding what she was just speaking on. I understand they're in mediation, and if they're in mediation, you're paying two people, correct? You have a lawyer that has to be there for mediation during these discussions. So, I would like to know more about the mediation and how many people were paying to do that. Also, it's been brought up numerous times on the treasurer that she has not been bonded. You mentioned an insurance policy that is not the same as being bonded. And I think if you check the laws in the state, there is a definite difference between bonding and insurance. So, I'd like to know why she's not bonded as of yet. Months have gone by. New time.
Okay. As I stated before, they don't call it bonding when we have a billion-dollar policy that comes to village, anyone that deals directly with our received assets. That's, you're saying that it's not that? I don't, I don't know how more I can tell you that it is the same as being bonded. So, if it's an insurance policy, I don't know where you're getting that it's not the same thing, but if something happens, we're insured for up to a million dollars per occurrence. With the, as far as, as far as Dr. Stroud is concerned, we are in mediation, but we have more than one entity that we're dealing with. We have another contract that is also being, is open, and it also has to be taken care of as for the USW. So, those things, those are the two things that are going on right now. And when the mediation gets to the point where we need the lawyers, quite naturally we will be using the lawyers for that reason, when it hits to that point. But to have them to go back and forth each and every day would be our whole lot more than what we're paying Dr. Stroud any $5,000 an hour to do that. You have a question?
Yes, my name is James Schultz. Item number 238, consent here. I would like to know when the tree limbs are going to be picked up that fell down a month ago from the store. It's been laying out there for over a month. Do you know if you'd like to, I'd like to find out when they're going to get picked up? In my lifetime or not?
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. The Public Works Director stated last, to me, the other day, that they were out doing the pickup from the store. Right now, they were deterred because there was a water main break behind the fire station, and also they're doing the work, that we had a small break on 223rd Street. But the tree limbs will be picked up. As a matter of fact, I'll talk to him tomorrow. He's left early today, not feeling well. But I'll make sure to find out the status in front of, right there, because I know where you live at, and find out exactly when those limbs will be picked up. Because he did mention that there was a storm, and you're right, it's been a while, and, but they were called away because we had two water main breaks, and then also ran into some trouble on 223rd Street.
I'm Kathy Newton. And on July 30th, I received an email.
I'm sorry, ma'am, why didn't you say it like that?
Newton? I received an email, a private, personal email, to support a fundraiser that was not supported through the town, and I'd like to know how trustee Brewer got my personal email. I have exactly five places that that email address is addressed to, one of which is the village of Saw Village, the rest are professional. So, I'd like somebody to find out how she managed to obtain my personal, private email to send me an email inviting me to a fundraiser on her private email.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
No, I have no idea. I have no idea.
You have a question? Okay, item number six. Reported the officers. Mayor's report. I just wanted to let everyone know, and I did mention it, that we hit close on the as for mentioned, the truck stop land. It was 32 acres that was closed. We're in the process now of trying to, well, they're going to come back and give the final plan of what they want to do with it. Right now, they're speculating some different things, and I don't mention it until I see it. So, I, that's why I haven't said much about it until it actually happens, because things have changed, if anyone knows. But they're planning on putting a pretty big footprint over there on the other side, on west of 394 and north of Saw Trail. So... As it, as that unfolds, I will give updates to the village about that, and I'm sure in the report today, there's some other businesses that are opening in the village, and I'm sure that you'll, I'm sure that the economic development director will be quite a little different thing about that. Thank you. The next item, vote support.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very short report. In front of you is a packet of materials that was distributed at informational form for potential candidates this past Saturday. A couple of trustees asked for it, so because a couple asked if I could just still share the entire content so that anyone else that would want it would have to their availability. One thing, though, that I would like to draw your attention to is on the right side, very first sheet, is a summary of evaluations. Whenever I conduct any type of professional development, training, or sessions, I do we then assessing if we met the goal, if we met the target, if people satisfied or whatever. And the results that you see there is that people were basically extremely satisfied with that date. We had about 12 people that attended, and the results were very, very favorable. And then I saw a number of people after that, and they verbally committed, commented rather on the success and how much that they had gained from being able to attend. So, please feel free to share that information with others that you may know, and know that that same material, if needed. I can make copies for residents as well, in the capacity of being the election officer for the village of Saw Village. Another thing that I would like to bring to your attention, trustees, if you notice that as we were in the executive conference room, you saw a computer and printer sitting there, we asked that that computer and printer be put back there so that if you ever have the need to use a computer while you are in the building, that area is set aside for you to use it day to day. Not to take up and use it as an office, but you may use the computer and the printer at your leisure. Another thing that I think that it's really worth us focusing on, mayor and trustees, is how have, how did we fare with people getting their licenses for their animal tags as well as for their cars? I know that as I'm out walking, just in my neighborhood, I see an awful lot of cars without village stickers on it, and I hear an awful lot of dogs barking, and I know that we have not even sold 50 dog tags, and I know that we have much more. So, I'm just appealing to us just to just be a little bit more focused when it comes to collecting those funds. And sir, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Village engineer, Mr. Jim Tharnick?
Thank you, mayor. Just a brief report. Your co-paving started work on the 223rd Street and Cornell Avenue project several weeks ago. Their subcontractor, J.J. Newell, started concrete construction, which includes curb and sidewalks, and I will be sure to keep you updated as the job progresses. And that concludes my report. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
I have a question. Well, comment, you'll sort of, let me do this. Recently, we just had a water main break from 223rd Paxton over to Laurel and those store streets. What I want to do is emphasize, we emphasize the point that we need to look at how we're doing with repaving the roads when we do, when we repay roads. Now, I understand there was a road that needed repair, repaid, repaid on 221st. We have the money coming in, the block wrap. Well, my, my position is to you is that why are we still trying to repay the road when there's an underlying problem, problem there? And we know it's a problem there because of the 221st Street project, you know, there was a lot of thousands, thousands of waters lost. But my thing is that we need to reevaluate how we're looking at these different areas, you know, before we repay the particular project. Because 223rd, even though I know it wasn't, you know, at first before we repaid it, but I'm just saying, it might come to a point where we might want to look at it again before we have repaid the project. So, we need to maybe reevaluate when we, before we do it again. You know, and not only 221st, we have 223 too, that's those prices plus 242 down that way.
I think it's a good idea. Public Works did a very good job this time around with 223rd, making sure that all that got replaced before we start the paving work. So, if we can do the same thing moving forward with our related reconstruction projects, that'd be a good idea.
Oh, good, great, fantastic job.
You got it?
Yes.
I don't know, the CPE here.
Yeah, we got this issue.
Okay, well, then, go ahead and take care of that, because I'll, I'll just walk without. I'm walking without you, ma'am. Okay, finance department. Finance department, Ma.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I know the treasurer's not here, but can you make some comments on this?
I can make comments in the report, can I get?
I have a question, just want to ask it.
Well, if she's out here, she asked you a question.
Well, okay, I can make a comment, I have a big mic on it. You decide for my comment, what's on?
I'm just saying, you can't ask me a question.
I have a comment, I think.
Yes. Go ahead, Ma.
Thank you, mayor and the board. The finance department completed the DCEO financial report for June. It was done on July 30th, 2018. There were no expenses quoted and/or no expenses incurred. MFP compliance report for the years starting from 2014 to 2016 has been completed and reported to Department of Transportation on August 10th, 2018. We reported the cost grant as of 6:30 2018 in the amount of $11,021.13. Cash was received on July 6th, 2018. We have collected the month, sorry, we have collected in the month of July from the Plano Compters Office towards J and P tickets in the amount of $6,659.30. The realistic tax revenue for the month of July is $510,744.70. I think I left out on the cash report that general fund special account has a balance of $1,347,392 intact, and we have not spent any money out of that account. Thanks, my board. Thank you, mayor and the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I would like to copy Dr. Stroud's invoices in the amount of $4,249.75. I'd like to copy all three of those invoices, and also copy all three of the HR unit negotiation in the amount of $2,550 for, for Dr. Stroud. For Dr. Stroud. In addition to that, since we bypassed the...
I'm going to go back and read the report. I'm going to go back and read the report that was given by the treasurer.
Okay, so, so can I get those copies?
Sure. I did have a report from the treasurer, and if reasons follows, dear mayor and trustees, attached to collective report from May and June 2018 highlights as follows. June includes the proceeds from the silver property, $230,000 in general fund, miscellaneous revenue. June includes reimbursement $31,000 for professional services and the mortgage tax from our debt. The expression was originally recorded in July 2017, February and March 2018. Reimbursement was recorded in June 2018, was resumbed in a negative expression in fiscal current fiscal year. June includes a negative $5,001 from miscellaneous revenues representative payment made through PSN that was rejected by PSN. One progress that pays the monthly payment balance will be adjusted. June 2018 water fees are 20% lower than June 2017. Director of Finance, Director of Public Works, and the Village Works investigated this decrease and determined that this was, that this was related to a year-over-year decrease in water usage. They found no other discrepancies in the billing process that would account for this large decrease in water bill. We could continue to monitor this situation. The collective report as read. For the month of May 2018, property tax, $97,766.70. Other taxes, $62,362.00. License and permits, $42,020.44. Fees and services, $151,404.00. Fees and services, one hundred and fifty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. Grants, nine thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety cents. Interfund transfers, forty-seven dollars and four hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety thirty cents. Missalaiders, ninety thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-three cents, for a total of five hundred and one thousand twelve dollars and thirty cents. For the month of June, property tax, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Other taxes, one hundred and ninety-five dollars, I'm wrong, sorry, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-six cents. License and permits, sixty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-four cents. Fees and services, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand fifty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. Grants, twenty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-two cents. Missalaiders, sixty thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-five cents, for a total of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-two cents.
I have a question. Mr. Mayor, uh, I, I understand that you just went over this, that, um, uh, you, you determined that there is no legal bond, or, but, um, I still would want a like, a copy of the, uh, attorney's, um, legal opinion on, on a bond, if, uh, a treasurer needs to be bonded. Uh, we have asked that for several times, and we still haven't gotten the answer, so we would, I really would like a copy of...
It should be given as...
Saying that it was, that it has to be bonded?
No, the answer was that the, uh, the identification that we have, it's necessarily bonded. You'd be given an answer?
I said, I, I'm a legal opinion, but...
It has to...
In, in Riley?
It, it was in Riley?
Okay, but I don't have a copy.
Okay.
So I'd like a copy of that. And also, I'd like a copy of, um, operational transfers, and see if, uh, some transfers have been made since, um, May of two thousand eighteen, any, uh, operational transfers, where the money hasn't been paid yet. And I'd like a copy of, uh...
You understand what operational transfer is, right?
I, I'd like a copy of...
I'm just asking you...
I know what it is.
Okay, because operational transfers do not have to be paid back yesterday, but that's operational...
I still like a legal opinion about operational transfers. And I'd like a legal opinion of the bonds, if you gave it to them, I'd like a copy of it. Simple with that. And, uh, for the, um, you just gave us a report, and it had thirteen pages to it, and we just got it, um, back yesterday, Monday at three fifty-five. We didn't have a chance to really look over the documents that we provided us. So I was wondering, um, can we put that back on the agenda for next week, take a look at it?
You can't, how can you put a collective report back on the agenda? I don't know what you're saying. How can you, this is a report, how can you put it back? You're not, you're not voting on this.
We wanted to discuss it, because it was thirteen pages...
You discussed it with who?
Well, um, thirteen pages was put out there, okay? So we, I'd like to take a look at it.
Did you want to come up to the treasurer's office or come to...
No, I want to put it back on the agenda, because I have some questions about it.
For what reason are you putting it back?
I want it back on the agenda, so I have some questions about it, because I have thirteen pages. It's impossible for us to look at...
You have questions, trust me.
It's impossible for us to look at the, um, thirteen documents that we had. What is the problem with getting the documents?
You have it right here. You have the documents right here, trust me.
Okay, and then I want, um, ask questions, I want to put it back on the agenda.
You still have to make a clear, trust me. What do you want it back on the agenda for?
I didn't have a chance to look at the thirteen documents that was drafted out, so...
Okay. So, but if you have questions, the treasurer will be here, because I cannot answer her with questions. So if you need to come talk to her, I'm just trying to figure out why you need to have that with me in agenda.
Because it's a financial matter, and everything on finance will be out of the public, and I would like to speak to, uh, not speak to, but talk about this stuff if one is available.
Yeah, I'd like to say the word.
I should do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I spoke with the treasurer today, and I know that she emailed the documents to you and the trustees a couple days ago, and then I took the liberty of making copies and putting it in your packet, and I informed her that I did so. She stated that she would not necessarily, she would not be here to go over it tonight. However, it is her intent that she will discuss in detail that very same report the next time, at our very next meeting. So it will appear on an agenda under unfinished business at our next meeting.
And maybe next for board meeting?
Board meeting. Well, she honestly didn't say, I'm sorry, if it was committee or board, she just said the next meeting, okay? So I guess she will inform us, Mr. Mayor, when she will be ready to discuss that, those thirteen pages.
Chief, who else need your report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees. Uh, since the fire, the fire chief had to leave, I have his report. Uh, for the last two-week period, the Fire Department responded to thirty-four calls, seven fire lines, six vehicle accidents, five let ambulance assists, two carbon oxid, two auto A, two one order investigation, one wire down, one electrical fire, two vehicle fires, one smell smoke, one illegal burn, one dumpster fire, two gas leaks, one structure fire at the Riker Farmhouse, and one rekindle fire at the Riker, uh, Farmhouse. Honorable Mayor and trustees, thank you letters were sent to all the departments that assisted us on the farmhouse, fire, and rekindle, the fires being investigated by the county police. Big thank you to all the residents who came out to National Night Out. People visited the safety trailer when there was smoke infected that they needed one. Many were impressed by how quickly a roof fire can spread and how fast our fire department extinguished it. That's the end of the Fire Department report. Now for the police report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees. Uh, for the two-week period, we had four hundred and thirty-five calls for service with eight arrests. Case of interest in May of two thousand eighteen, this year, we had a homicide in Carroll Avenue, shortly after one offender was arrested and two fled the scene, which prompted warrants for their arrest. Last week, our police department was contacted by the Lafayette, Indiana Police Department, who advised ahead that two offenders in custody. Arrangements are being made to pick up both offenders and bring them to court for their initial appearance. National Night Out two thousand eighteen was held on August seventh, and was a great success. I'd like to thank everyone who helped make it so special. There are many, uh, people, uh, that made it such a success, uh, such as the mayor, the Sawt Village trustees, village clerk, the fire chief, and the Sawt Village Fire Department, who, by the way, always do a fantastic job on the housework display. I'd like to acknowledge all those businesses who came to support our event. American Family Restaurant, who prepared its own food at the outing, and on August ninth, gave a generous monetary donation, which will go toward Shop with Cap. Prudential Insurance, Sawt Village School District, one sixty-eight Blossoms, Sawt Village McConaughey Library, Crosswords Church, Walgreen, Secret Direct, Gen Care, Sawt Village Senior Advisory Council, C N Railroad Police, Culvers, Illinois Treasurer's Office, Alvever, Kansas Sawt Village Esda, and our very own DJ Steve LaRue. A special thank you to trustees Beth Supan and Linda Todd, helping sell snacks and refreshments, along with, uh, village clerk Marv Bell Campbell-Prue, for organizing our partner vendors. Always a special thanks to our very own Sawt Village K nine Falco and Officer Fredericson, who put on a spectacular display. Again, an event like this is not successful without the cooperation of many individuals. The time and effort to put out for this event, uh, for it to occur is greatly appreciated. Thank you all again, and we look forward to a, uh, another National Night Out two thousand nineteen. Lastly, our Strike Force statistics. I recently received the third quarter statistics from the D E A Strike Force that Officer Brad Quire was assigned to, and I'd like to share those with you. To date, the Strike Force has made ninety-four arrests and recovered over two hundred and forty-seven kilograms of cocaine, ninety-four kilograms of heroin, two hundred and forty-nine point nine pounds of marijuana, and eighty-one point five pounds of meth. Strike Force has also seized six million eight hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents in cash, ninety-seven thousand nine hundred dollars in value of vehicles or vessels, and seized thirty-five weapons, uh, which were recovered. Our participation in Strike Force has been very well received and welcomed by the Assistant Special Agent in Charge of D E A, Chicago Division. I'm very proud of the work done by Officer Guo, and as well as, uh, other members of, uh, the Strike Force. They truly are trying to make our community a safer place to live. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Management, uh...
Mayor, sorry, I could just interrupt for a quick minute before you move on. Uh, Chief, I didn't get a chance to do this to you last week, but the proceeds from the sale of the pot water and snacks was a hundred and twenty-five dollars, so that, too, goes to Shop with a Cop this fall.
Thank you. Uh, Emergency Management, able to see, uh, about the report you have before?
Yes, sir. Uh, Director Allen Vavrick submitted a report, and he states on July thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, Sawt Village's Hazard Mitigation Report was filed with Cook County Department of Homeland Security. We, meaning Sawt Village, are in compliance with the Cook County Department of Homeland Security Hazard Mitigation Agency, and he wished to thank James Serenik for his assistance with compiling the information as we did.
Thank you. Economic Development? Economic Development Director, I'm Joseph Whitmore.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Steven, go first.
Oh, you have their report, okay, you have one.
Report coming from the Public Works. Uh, one leaky, one leaky B box on two hundred seventeen twenty-four, Peterson, and one dead request for an inside leak at two sixteen fifty-five. We will ship back as soon as possible. Staff prepared a main break on two hundred twenty-third in Merrill, and then will call back because it broke again, so we did a main replacement. Residents were under a board order and have been fi, have been lifted, all were notified. There are three new repairs that are in process on two hundred twenty-third, so the road, so the road work can be completed. Small jobs are being completed at the Village Hall, Public, I'm sorry, Police Department and Fire Department, like plumbing, lights, and leaks, the name of few. Repairs ongoing at both wellhouses, including quotes to replace the roof at the main station. Two repairs have been made in the chemical meter controls and main breaker and wiring for well number two completed. Brass cutting continues at the Village locations, part-time help, some staff, and work on infrastructure. Seasonal help is assisting, seasonal help is assisting in the completion of the landscape at the community center and police department. Due to unforeseen emergencies, we have not been able to pick up storm branches, and we have hold it off until September, break, until September is ready to pick up. All branches can be put out until September, before September ninth, for final pickup. Just a reminder, we're coming to a rainy season, so please don't throw debris in the roadway, this would end up in the storm sewer and cause flooding, damage, and then, and is a waste of taxpayers' money due to overtime. Staff is doing its best to assist all departments set up for intervention addresses. All residents complaints are much as possible, so please be patient, we are behind on all work. The concrete work completed up two hundred and twenty-six of brickwood, second half of the dial, and asphalt acre, and street repairs, slow, slow going. Several other dials are being prepared and going to move forward. Next is two hundred and seventeen of market halls, third sidewalk, and the technical. Replacement of the, the su, I'm sorry, the customer service truck is underway. The cost used in C M S state bids is so far the cheapest. We try to stay under the budget, model twenty-five thousand, hope we can move forward, and that concludes this report. Report again from the Economic Development Director, Mr. Whitmore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as many already know, the village was awarded the investment Cook Grant, um, that we applied for earlier this year. The grant is for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for engineering work for roadway and rail spur extension. Cook County has already begun phase one work, um, on this project, uh, which included rail and roadway engineering, as well as geotechnical work on the village-owned property, uh, within the Justice Center. Um, we will be working with, uh, council on the intergovernmental agreement with Cook County and directing that resolution, um, that'll be before the board for approval sometime soon. Um, the Gassin Wash, um, project will be, was kicked off last week, um, they look to, uh, get things moving here soon. Um, we had a pre-construction meeting with the general contractor, the village's building inspector, and the owner of the property, uh, last week. That meeting went very well. Um, the board has before it tonight, for consideration, a resolution to support a Class Eight property tax classification for the Gassin Wash project. This was discussed last week. All of the questions regarding Class Eight were answered last week as well. The project, uh, would not be possible, um, but for the Class Eight designation, because the property taxes on development in Cook County are prohibitive. As reported to you last week, the project, uh, investment will be about ten million dollars. The property was generating zero property tax, uh, money, because the village owned the property. Um, it should be generating about three hundred and thirty-five thousand annually in property taxes to the Tuft District, and an additional two hundred and forty thousand annually in sales tax and gain revenues. So over the ten years, the next ten years, the project will generate approximately five point seven million dollars to the village and provide thirty-eight permanent jobs. Um, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Yes.
May I have a copy of this report, please?
Yes.
Yeah, I will, I advise another Todd, trustee Todd, that, um, have a copy of the report in the box, and I'll leave it on the box.
Reports of trustees, standing committees, and calendars. Public Service Committee, trust me, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Service Committee, we're starting up, uh, the Silcaree class, it'll be sometime at the beginning of October, if you're interested, just please give your, um, your vote, see if we set up something for the, uh, the Silcaree classes. And also, my comment, I'm still championizing, um, one of the, one of the, that I would like a written copy from the attorney addressing operational transfers and bonding for the, uh, treasurer. I would like a copy from the treasurer, I mean, from the attorney, that address these two issues. I, this stuff has been going a long time, and we can't seem to get a, a straight answer on these, the two, two particular issues, so I would like something from the attorney addressing operational transfers and bonding for the treasurer. That's the end of my report.
Budget Finance, trustee Roger Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, last week, I'm helping the board with a cattle policy and a cybersecurity policy. Uh, I believe that trustee Supan recommended that I, uh, ask the advice of, uh, Gerald Natchitoches Consulting on cybersecurity, so he will be coming up to my committee meeting tomorrow at seven o'clock, and then I will be presenting, uh, packet of board with inspiring a lot of donations for our next sitting committee. That concludes my report.
Thank you. House and the Government Relations Committee, trustee assistant Tate. Orders reviewed, committee trustee Linda Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, our committee met yesterday, and we are finishing up the false alarm ordinance, it's been haunting us for quite a while, and sending it off to the attorneys, and then once I get it back, I'll present it to the board. I also have, um, there's three more ordinances that I will be presenting to the board, probably, I'm not gonna say at the next committee on the whole, because it depends how long it's gonna take for them to type it up. because it depends how long it's going to take for them to type it up. Um, and I've not said that they are on next meeting, but I'll announce it at the committee on the whole when our next meeting is. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, trustee Deb Zupan.
Public Safety next meets on Wednesday, September fifth, here in the Rotunda at six P M. That concludes my reports.
Community operations, trustee Robert Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we're a little slowly getting things started, but we're trying to move. Uh, we're looking at, uh, next meeting will be, uh, maybe the twenty-sixth of, uh, of August. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment. At one of the meetings, I, I, this community office is not one of our standing committees, and I suggested that we could do it in that, to our standing committee orders.
I need to get that two new A S A P. I have to, uh, get it written out and then let you review it.
Okay, so Parks and Parks is that still there to be a standing committee?
It's going to be, it's going to be two, so I'll have to.
Okay, so then this will be Parks and Parks and Community Office.
Okay.
Okay, just wanted to do a reminder.
You stand up. Reports of commission, I'm sorry, commission, senior advisory council chairman, Mr. David Fox.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, trustees, first of all, I just want to, uh, thank everyone that participated in our first, uh, senior outing. Uh, you all contributed to it being a great success. I think this, uh, I heard enough of the rave reviews from the seniors, uh, that they had a great time. So thank everyone that participated. And hopefully we'll be having another one, another outing before, uh, the weather gets, uh, bad, before the weather breaks. Also, uh, September eighteenth, we're having a home energy assessment, uh, from Comer in the senior center. And that's the, uh, ten A M. Comer will be out, uh, addressing the public on how they can get, uh, get some things for energy, basically. Uh, myself is actually personally head of company to assess that one house. And we got a lot of different things, light bulbs, um, uh, things for your faucet to help with your water bill, um, shower needs, you know, so they did give you a whole assessment to help with your energy. So just like to spread that around and give more details on next, uh, point. That's all I have. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I have a question. Uh, Mr. Palmer, this is the same assessment program that we did earlier in, um, August. Um, we did it for, um, Canal Light and Thunderstone. Is this the same assessment as this, um, NICOR and, uh?
No, this is, uh, just comments.
This is comments, so it's the same.
Did you have NICOR?
Yeah, NICOR. But they have comments even more early, so you're going to do it again?
No, you're married yourself. Yeah, we're going to do that.
Okay.
Okay. New business, I'll accept the motion to approve accounts payable and disbursements dated August fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen for three hundred and sixty-six thousand and seventy-eight dollars in aid funds.
So.
Sir.
And the move by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Grant. Any questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, the, um, payments for Dr. Strutter and also the, uh, bathroom, we might want to look into this because it seems like to me that we are spending a lot of money, close to almost six thousand dollars a month for, um, expenses for whatever she does on a daytime. So, um, I'm saying that we, we talking about cutting back money. Me White wants to cut back some, on some of this money. Um, she's making almost six thousand dollars, um, a month and, um, nobody can really tell you what it's for. You know, she's, she makes more than anybody in the village, um, part-time. And I understand that she, she's doing negotiation, I can understand that. But, uh, HR with forty-seven people, employees, you know, something's wrong. Somebody needs to cut back some, like this is what I just, we probably want to look at when you talk about cutting stuff back. This is excessive for any part-time employee to make that much money.
Any other questions?
Dustin. Dustin.
I have a comment. Because we get every cost payable, this comes up with Dr. Strutter. And I went back to look to see what we voted on because we were saying seventeen point four or five hours. That's not what this board voted on. We voted on seventeen hours. And I understand, Mr. Mayor, you gave me some information on the statement of work that does not match what we voted on. And so I have to question what we're paying her. Probably for seventeen hours, then we're overpaying her. This is what we voted about. I'll be waiting to have you give you a copy of it.
I have a copy.
Okay, because seventeen point four or five.
It doesn't say six hours or what?
No.
It doesn't say that on there?
No, and if the meeting, when we.
I'm sorry, you said it doesn't say that.
No, just says no.
Okay.
Okay, um.
And that's just for, uh, human resource, it has nothing to do with.
No, I'm not, I'm not even talking about negotiations. This is part of the statement of work. And this is what we voted on. And at the time, I commented that we did a committee on the whole. And trustee Zupan brought up no more than six thousand a month, so should be budgeted. And at that time, when we went to vote on it, they said that this was missing. This is what we voted on. The information you gave me, I'm not sure who typed that up, but this is what we voted on. So my question is, she's, she's taking advantage of the seventeen point four or five, and we are overpaying her. So this has nothing to do with negotiations. What I'm also looking at on invoices, back in two thousand and seventeen, she'd give you a detail of what she's doing. Now it's very generic. I'd like to know what she does on a day-to-day basis and more detailed invoice than just professional services. So that is my comment.
What she does on a day-to-day basis is what needs to be done the three days that she's here. I don't have anything written down for a ban to say, okay, you do this and just die. If there's things that need to be done regarding, um, HR services, human resources, then that's what is taken care of on a day-to-day basis. So I don't know what more I can, you know, tell you about, but that's, that's how that's handled. Any other questions?
Mayor, I thought that we had proven the statement of work to be the six thousand dollars a month, which is why I've been approving these because, uh, I actually several, um, weeks ago went back to Dr. Strutter and said, hey, you know, seventeen forty-five a week, where are you coming up with twenty-seven minutes every week, right? Because seventeen point forty-five is seventeen hours and twenty-seven minutes. And she said, actually, I put in more time than that, but because I'm limited to six thousand dollars a month, I just cut it off at that and make the hours equal to six thousand dollars and don't charge any more than six thousand dollars a month. So based on that conversation, that's why I've been approving the invoices when they come across.
Any other questions? All right, board, please follow along.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
And trustee Carter?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Motion to approve the resolution supporting the class eight tax incentive for the property coming commonly known as the northwest corner of Park Road, I three ninety-four. I accept the motion.
So.
Sir.
Move by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Grant. Any questions? My board.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Item number C, motion to approve and agree with ADP automatic data processing to provide payable processing support services. I'll let it end the motion.
So.
The move by trustee, um, Grant, second by trustee Todd. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, uh, trustee Zupan asked, uh, committee on the whole when it came to this ADP to see a comparison. And I've not seen a comparison. She had asked to see that, comparing what, uh, because if we looked at the analysis, which I don't think is correct, but she had asked for a comparison. So I've not seen a comparison from ADP going to work with forty-seven hour boy to, um, what our cost payable is. And I just wanted to move that point up because she asked for it last week. And that's all I'm going to say. Great.
Oh, I'm sorry, your.
If I may, trustee Todd, I didn't receive anything, but I went back through the ADP information and put something together myself, just so I could feel comfortable with knowing now I'm just going to proceed tonight.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Motion is carried. Uh, before we adjourn, I forgot to mention about the corn and dog roast, which will be September. I'm sorry, the other item was put on the hold. And, um, that's item D, and that will be brought up at the next meeting. So we will have an exact, I mean, sorry, special meeting next week at six forty-five. Um, also, as I stated, I forgot to inform you more about the corn and dog roast, which will be September the eighth here at the village hall at twelve five. Those are not the main, the corn and dog roast. We come out, refrigerate with the, uh, residents. We're going to have, um, corn, hot dogs, and I think, um, pop and, um, maybe some other goods that we'll be, uh, selling. So, um, again, I'm looking for volunteers to help out with that particular project. And, uh, that's again on September eighth. I'll accept the vote.
Mr. Mayor, it's helpful. I know you're looking for volunteers and talking about the trustees. I just want to let you know I'm the other kind.
I'm looking for the motion to adjourn. The move by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Grant, all in favor? On the carry.